Everyone, this work session at Osseo School Board is hosted at Rice Park Elementary School. Are you cool girls?
Yes.
So good to be here. Today is August 16th, 2022. The work session has been audio recorded. The recording will remain available on the district website within 24 hours after the work sessions have ended. Audio recordings of all work sessions will remain available on the district website within 24 hours after the work session has ended. The purpose of school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information and be applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. That will come up today as work session. Our board members will receive updates and information on the district's three-year operational plan. The board calendar will also be reviewed. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that board members and district leaders go around the table starting with their names.
That's Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement. Good evening, welcome.
Kate Emmett, Director of Student Services.
Thomas Brooks, School Board Director.
Robin Consolus, Director of Learning and Achievement.
John Morsted, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Tanya Simon, School Board Director.
Anthony Paterness, Executive Director of Technology.
Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Kelly Parpard, Assistant Superintendent for all secondary schools.
Kaye Boll, School Community Relations Director.
Amy Tollison, the District Global Principal.
Ryan Seabiscott-Hall, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
Steve Pliss, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools.
Jackie Moscana-Jones, School Board Director.
Corey McIntyre, Superintendent.
Tim Palmetier, General Counsel.
And I, yeah. I am Kelsey Dawson-Muffin, School Board Director, Emma Handover, Superintendent Director.
Thank you, and I want to take a moment. Diane Bagley, our new principal here at Rice Lake is with us and kind of helping us soak in this new addition here. And some of you were able to come out when we had students. And it's such a different feel when you are out here with students using these spaces, but at least it gives you a feel for how this was designed and maybe a little taste of potential future 21st century learning spaces as we eventually hope to get to Phase Two of our Building a Better Future. So this is just one first step in realizing that aspiration we have. So if you get a moment out of break after, where's this, can take a look around and recognize all the different unique and flexible opportunities that exist in the space. And thank you, Diane, for being with us. Diane, you're a veteran, are you, what, six weeks in?
Six weeks in, lifetime of love.
You made it to the Jacob Rock Parade.
I did, I knew it.
That's right. Well, thank you, and we have, thank you to, it's really nice to have our board members and our cabinet members and leaders here at the table together. It's been a few and far between even since I've become superintendent. So I'm really excited getting back to that partnership and the collaboration amongst our leadership team and our, and our school board members. So as I, I'll set up the agenda with some comments to start before we jump into the content. And there's a lot of material here, and I'll kind of help you sort out what to stay focused on. But kind of from a high level, it's good for all of us to keep our minds on the fact that as a district, we're working towards our vision and being proactive, and we're working, you know, really towards our first year of implementing the new strategic plan, our first real opportunity to launch this. And the board and our team have worked hard to reimagine what our schools could look like and what we want our scholars or families and our staff for their daily lived experience to be. So for the next three years, our vision is to unleash and enhance the brilliance of our scholars to drive and change the world. And it's going to take all of us, it's going to take our communities, it's going to take our families, our scholars, and all of us as employees and our board to bring that vision to life. And we are really trying hard to break down, continually break down any silos that exist. And when we hit our administrative kickoff, our theme is one. So one district for every one and everyone. And that was our, that's our theme to kick off the year. I know many of you were able to join us for Dr. Stephen Peters to really help us drive that theme home. And he's also going to be sharing that same message with all of our employees on August 30th through our live stream event. So we're excited about that coming. I think we all realize there's a lot at hand, there's a lot at stake if our vision isn't achieved. And our scholars, family, staff, and community have identified what they are expecting of us. So we, in front of us, there's ways we need to do better in specific ways. So some, some areas, kind of globally, our scholar achievement and how they're achieving academically, the support and connections for our scholars, and what we need to do to support their everyday needs, how we continue to give our scholars what they need when they need it. And even as we move into the fall, you know, our, our needs financially through funding and meeting the demands of our current status with our current referendum that we'll talk more about as we get into our agenda. So I think it's one of those things where we have a lot of challenges. But this, the strategic plan and now our operationalized efforts that are the new implementation and learning work initiatives in addition to the standard work already in place that we kind of put through the strategic continuous improvement process is going to get us there. But it's really this team tonight, right? So the people in front of you, board members, that, that you know well, but it comes down to tonight's about what are we going to do to be implementing to realize what you've given us from a governance level on the strategic plan. So as you look at your packet, there's a number of things that we included that won't be covered tonight, but gives you context. So the department plans from pretty much every department, and then there's three under the Division of Leadership and Teaching and Learning for our Student Services, Learning and Achievement, and our Equity Departments. So you have a lot of content there. Those are, that's meant as background, additional information where lays out deeper level work that complements the high priority items that you'll see in the district-wide initiatives. So you also in your packet have a copy of the Classroom to Boardroom Strategic Portfolio Definitions Document, and then also a visual document of the, my own organization's one here. I'll just flash a couple, please. I want to spend just a minute on this one. It's a visual of kind of our, it's a visual of representing our work together. So on this, elements of Classroom to Boardroom Strategic Planning Process, if you look at that, at the center are our scholars, our staff, our families, and that is our daily experience. Board members, as a governance, you led the way in the strategic roadmap and strategic plan and continuing to work on the district long-range planning, our, your board structure and workflow, and then that as we aspire to our three-year plan. That came after we consulted with our community, our families, our scholars, our staff. We did the story wall, we did the environmental scan. We got input and feedback on those desired daily experiences. Some of that happened pre-pandemic, and then we went back and did it again because our reality changed. And then we finally got some feedback on that strategic roadmap before you approved it. So after those two things, now it's in the administration's hands, the management team, as we develop the three-year operational plan, develop our vision cards, our department improvement plans, and our school improvement plans, and getting those all in alignment. And it's taken us moving into year four of my time here just to get to this point. So we're excited about that and really being able to have a big impact on our district. So that, that's just a kind of a refresher. I did include that definitions document because there's terminology we're still kind of getting comfortable with. I also just want to thank our leadership team, our cabinet members, and our other directors and leaders that are here because change is hard, and we've had to push through kind of what, out of our comfort zone as we began to build out these district initiatives, our department and school-level plans. So, but we also realized to make successful shifts, we're going to have to do what works and let go of what doesn't. And then begin to continue to reinforce the accountability practices to ensure good things are happening and results are happening. And really reimagine the things that may be no longer serving our scholars. So trying to leverage that creative spirit, innovation, and embracing new mindsets is kind of what's in front of us. Tonight's an informational item. The board doesn't act on this. This is really our work internally that we're sharing with you in the spirit of consultation and getting feedback as we continue to refine. So as we move through the course of the year, you'll see later tonight, we've mapped out, built in checkpoints and monitoring reports so that you can give us feedback. And, you know, we don't know always what's coming in front of us. We've experienced that over the last few years. So there will be revisions, there'll be improvements, there'll be changes and adaptations to what we have in front of you tonight. It's a, it's a fluid model that will allow us to make adjustments throughout. And I'll cover later how we are making changes to how our leadership is strategically monitoring our own progress internally ahead of when we report to the board. We've been in kind of a reactive mode for pretty much three years. And so this is the first time I feel like we've been really able to begin to map out proactively with intention, a stronger continuous improvement cycle. Also in your materials is a copy of the Strategic Growth and Change Visual, which is really the backbone of, of this work initiative document. So I've got to find my own copy here. That one, who's got it? It's a big, this one here, thank you. So this is a visual of what we're going to talk through tonight, and this is our continuous improvement model. We talked about what are our learning items, what are our implementation items this year, which we'll start with. And then over the course of the year, we're going to continue to inventory what is our standard work, some practices that are solidly in place, and some of those might need to come back for a continuous review if they need strengthening. So the, and the bulk of our work is in standard work. So the time we're spending on the newer initiatives is a smaller portion of what's in front of us for the year. But this is a good visual way of representing how we do that, and then also what are the emerging influences if you look at the top, and then what needs to lead the system as we go to the right on the bottom in the types of work. And we're all getting comfortable with kind of a new way of describing how we, the vocabulary, the language used to talk about our continuous improvement strategies. So we're going to walk through for about the first hour, I think there's 30 items. So we're going to try to be really concise, high-level, brief summary to give you a little bit of context of what each implementation initiative is about. And then we'll move into learning work initiatives. So those are the things that we're researching, we're testing, we're studying, and trying to decide whether they move to an implementation item. And as you look at this document, the one that we'll spend the most time on, I'll point out right away, in our standard work practices, during COVID, we were not able, as most districts, we were not able to really move a whole lot to standard practice because we were really living in operational challenges. And I'll just highlight this corner box down here with COVID. And that really sums up most of the last three years, the preparedness and responses that we had to do around all those areas. You know, those are really our key indicators that we were reporting to you on frequently. We were able to move some things forward with DL4A and our pre-K technology. And another example is our kayak committee, Kirkland Instruction and Assessment Committee. That is, we were able to move that into standard practice as well, thanks to Robin and her team. And well, Jackie and Heather have served as board members on that. So there are some examples of standard work, but we've been kind of mired in a lot of new learning and getting to a point of some implementation. So this is about as much as you hear me talking tonight. I'm going to begin to, you know, I'm excited to have our cabinet team and leadership team get their voice in the space with you and the board and really showcase and identify and highlight some of the key elements of the implementation work and learning work. If there's follow-up, specific things you might want after tonight, we're more than happy to dig deeper. And you'll see some of those things articulated in the department plans. So their department plans take some of these items and drive it down even deeper and include additional work that is happening in each department that's not necessarily a high priority item. I think the cabinet would, we've talked a lot about my, my fear of there's a lot here. So when you think about a lot of organizations and you've worked with organizations, say, what's your three to five top priorities? Well, we have 30 here, so that's ambitious. But as we work through this list, we really felt like, well, we can't take that off. That's a big deal. And we can't take that off, that's a big deal. We did really try to boil this down to the, the key items that we think need to impact the system now, and then what are some other items that are learning? And then there's another set of items that are kind of even further out, like we're wondering about, you know, that might come down the pipe later, that we're not quite ready to study yet, but we're wondering about. And so those things will, this will continue to materialize. And I think you'll hear our team talk about, we might realize some of these during the year, other items might be on here multiple years. So some of these initiatives might be year one, year two, or phase one, or phase two. Or we might need multiple years for learning work too, depending on the pace and learning that we have, we will make decisions on whether things move from learning to full implementation. So we'll talk through that a little bit as well. Let me just make sure I haven't missed anything here as far as your packet goes. We'll get to the one-year board calendar at the end, and then I've developed a superintendent annual calendar to tie all these elements together. That'll give you a visual representation of how we're trying to align our administrative work with the board direction moving forward. So this is an at-a-glance version, it's a one-pager. And our next step is to develop a three-year plan. So what you might see in next year is if some of the learning work moving to implementation, maybe some of the implementation items moving to standard work if we've arrived there at that point. And that's something we're continuing to build out with our, with our leaders. But this is really now the day-to-day way of putting in place the strategic plan that the board has set for us. So I'm going to just start us off, and we got cabinet members and team members identified to give the brief updates, and we were kind of thinking about two minutes or less on each one, gets us to about an hour. So if you're willing to tolerate us presenting this and giving you the full picture, then we can come back to questions that you have on any particular items in the context. And the first one, I mean, you've heard a lot about, I'll start in the middle column on implementation because I think our focus tonight is on the implementation items that we are moving in, moving on this year. And then we'll go next to the learning work after that. And the first one at the top is going to work our way down. This is around Strategic Direction A, Creating Safe, Welcoming, Inclusive Learning Environments That Foster Global Curiosity, Belonging, Innovation, and Engagement. And the first one is our Building a Better Future Phase One, our Operational and Technology Referendum. And you've had a lot of information about this over the last few months, and, you know, we're ramping up to November, actually, early voting starts next month. So we're already on the doorstep of that. It's odd, though, as much as we've been pushing and communicating, I just met someone the other day that really hadn't heard it at all. It was like their first time. So I'll never assume everyone's been hearing about our, about the information campaign and, or if it feels like we're being a bit too repetitive, there's still people we're not always connecting with. So if you have that experience, just continue to steer them towards the resources. Our, we're asking our community to reinvest in our district to maintain and address those growing needs that we have. I'll have an enrollment update for the board by the end of the week, but I was stuck with our team and Jim Greeley again today. We are, we are, we're up about 400 students in our enrollment. When you look at new enrollments versus withdrawals, we're netting plus 400 or more. Now, it's, Jim will say it's day-to-day, and it's volatile, it changes a lot, and there's a lot of variables at play there. As we move into the November election, that first question is again on our day-to-day learning operations and enhancing that individualized learning, academic intervention, mental health, and other classroom supports. But the core of this is it's our people. Eighty-five percent of our budget is our staff, so those dollars are really paying for the people to implement the programs and deliver on all those things that it includes. Even in the technology arena, that also pays for some of our staff to support our technology needs. So just clearly from an informational perspective, that's something at the core of it. If it fails, I always like to cover this too, we'll start with a $5 million cut, and if we can't renew it next year, now we're talking more like a $50 million cut, and that's as high as 450 jobs that we won't be able to maintain. So after Phase One, Phase Two is facility needs. And we're, you're going to see in the calendar, our pre-planning for bringing Phase Two recommendations through the Oversight Task Force to the board for facility recommendations as we get deeper into the school year. I don't think I'll spend much more time on, on that because you're well tuned in. I'll just mention we have three more community sessions in September, and we're getting closer to the election date as to make sure we have factual information being provided. And then if, again, if you're hearing or need any additional support, we have lots of, okay, we have lots of materials, but I think we had to reprint our hash sheets because we ran out. So we're truly trying to get, Kaye says that's a good thing. So I think that's probably the, the big thing I wanted to cover with Building a Better Future Phase One. So that's a massive initiative for us and a very time-consuming one for all of us. And I want to thank Kaye and John and the rest of our team. We're doing a training for all of our building teams tomorrow. I don't know how many people you expect in there, Kaye.
I've bet about 100.
Yeah, so just informational training, so we're really making sure we're not only following the rules, but using our, our schools to make sure they're communicating in an effective way. With that, I'm going to move on to the next item, 279 Online, and I've asked Anthony to speak briefly to this one.
279 Online, we're moving into Phase Three of Implementation. And over the years, you guys have all heard different pieces of information as we've gone through the development of this. Last year, we excitedly launched the first year of our official comprehensive program, K through 12, with approximately 1,000 students enrolled for that first inaugural year, and a beautiful graduation at the end of the year at, at the U of M, which was, which was wonderful to see. As we move into this year, there's kind of two parts to what we're doing with 279 Online. One is to strengthen and build upon the comprehensive program to keep the momentum going with that. And the second component is to start building the systems and structures for supplemental online learning. So our, our students in our comprehensive high schools could take a course or two courses in an online format should they choose to build that within their schedule. For Phase Three, we are targeting specifically grades nine through 12, with the program kind of initially building around students that we know are taking supplemental online courses in Northern Star Online or other supplemental online providers. So trying to find out what courses they're taking, why they're taking them, and how we can have them come back into Osseo area schools and take that within our online programming. So that's our work within 279 Online for this coming school year.
Okay, and our next and last item with Strategic Direction A is our Multi-Year System of Support Around Behavior. So that's Amy and Kaye to update us.
And it's actually going to be Amy and Robin. We're buying our MTSS work.
Right. So, and we're speaking to it because it scans or expands both Strategic Direction A and B. So we'll be speaking to both parts in kind of this update. So we, this year, we're going to be implementing our social-emotional learning curriculum. We're really excited about that. For the last two years, it's been in learning work, and so it moves to implementing this, this year. We are implementing K through 12th grade. And so we've begun training teachers on the new curricular materials. They're going to have training again in October and again in November with the expected implementation and the second try starting in December. Very excited about that. So teachers are being able this August to kind of dig into the materials, try things as they want to, and then we will be implementing in December. Also in Tier One, which is that piece that everyone gets, we're continuing to focus on those high-impact instructional strategies and really supporting teachers so that their core instruction is really strong, so fewer students will need those other tiers, the Tier Two and Tier Three support. So that continues and has been in implementation the last few years, but we know that as we come back from coming through many models of instruction, we need to reinforce that again, what it looks like in person and then also online. And for then, for those students that need additional support, I have the two, Tier Two and Tier Three supports. And we are in our second year of implementing ADSES, which are interventionists that we provide for all, all sites across the system, including 279 Online. And the interventionist provides support for students in both reading and math. And also in our second year is our Fastbridge Assessments, which gives screening and progress monitoring assessments that we give so that teachers know better how to focus their instruction and make sure they're meeting the individual needs of the students. And then our last piece on this is really providing that accelerated learning piece and the supports that students need so that they can access the grade-level curriculum. And we know that as we came back from COVID, that was something we really focused on, making sure that our instruction doesn't go back and we don't remediate, but we move forward and continue to support those students. And then Amy's going to speak to you on some more Tier Two and Three supports.
We'll be free to do that. Board members, many of those items have come through our kayak committee, and those briefing memos are in your shared drive, right? So in case you want a little more details of that process, program improvement processes coming full circle.
Absolutely. So thanks, Robin. In addition to the supports that we are receiving through our social-emotional learning at Tier One, also with our PBAS work that we have in place around Tier One, we're thinking about what are the additional needs of our scholars around Tiers Two and Tier Three. And so some examples of those that are in our system that we continue to provide support for are things such as restorative circles that we offer to build communities, thinking about what are the proactive pieces where we really want to be spending majority of our time building communities in our classroom. And when situations arise, then we respond to those. Some additional of the supports that I am referencing, also we have something called Sabers, which is a social-emotional screening tool, so we can identify students that might be in need of additional support. We have something called IM4, which is also a way to work individually, trying to really identify the root cause of needs for our students, and then develop a plan for a specific individual student. And then we also, as you know, added in additional FTE through counselors and psychologists outside, for example, psychologists outside of just special education with the goal that they are providing additional supports. And that could be things like small groups, more check-ins for students, so providing some of those more personalized supports that can really help some of our students in the needs that they have. And in addition to the supports we're providing for our students, we still continue to provide professional development for our staff to build their capacity around understanding restorative practices and trauma-informed practices as well.
I would add too, Kate, thanks for your work on this. We continue to build, and it's been a challenge because of high demand, but our therapeutic mental health partners. So that's clinical therapy, mental health partners that we've had, and it's been a bit of a challenge. And then this year, we'll be diving deeper into, where it says supporting scholars in crisis, we're really unpacking the different kinds of crisis, whether it's scholars in crisis due to a divorce, whether it's a basic needs shelter food crisis, whether it's a mental health, emotional, or social crisis, or even maybe a physical health crisis. So we're really trying to dive into that because our social work, all of our support staff, if we can learn how, how that's occurring in our system, we can target the services even more specifically. So that's an added, we're even considering how we can provide you with, and all of us with a scorecard and around how we're measuring and targeting those supports in those areas. So that's work that's coming into implementation. Kaye, don't know if you want to add anything here?
Along with those supports, we have a homeless liaison who works with more than 500 students generally by the end of the year that are identified as homeless. And we added another social worker to, with another grant with Homework Begins at Home to bridge homework and school. So she works closely with families to keep them, the goal is, it's a county grant to keep people in their homes and successful in school. So we're the successful at school component of it, but we partner with the county for the other parts.
Okay, so I'm going to move on.
Robin, so, you know, I think this board has been really supportive of the social-emotional learning. So I think, I think it's great. What kind of communication, will there be communication to families so to really reinforce their support or even have their own tools to?
Yes, absolutely. Once we do the professional development in November, we'll be having the pilot teachers can create a communication piece to share with the whole system about what the content is of the social-emotional learning piece is so that parents will understand like what's coming up, what they can expect their students to be talking about.
Great, thank you.
All right. Strategic Direction Letter B, Build and Nurture a Culture of Achievement by Providing Content-Rich, Rigorous, Equitable, and Individualized Pathways. So to start in the middle, we have a lot of program improvement work coming, a lot of new curriculum, changes to curriculum, and any one of these on any given year is a lot of work, and we have multiple coming this year and next year. And so Robin and her team have a lot of interesting work coming their way, and I'll turn it over to Robin to talk about the different things that are implementation this year.
Yeah, really excited about our science implementation that we'll be doing. So we'll be implementing new science curricular materials in elementary, eighth grade physics, and chemistry. So this has been an ongoing process as it's been in learning work for quite a few years, just really learning about the new science standards and then with the interruption kind of in, with MDE's work and our work connected, it's kind of postponed until now, but we're very excited about that. What we'll see and what students will see are different practices of really being deeply engaged in the science instruction instead of having a teacher tell them about science, they'll be discovering it themselves with hands-on activities. Both the middle school and high school will be in the second year of math implementation, which also is a very hands-on process, a very student-centered conversation, cooperative process. So last year, they began, and this year, we're going to continue. And we're going to be closely monitoring the implementations of the new resources with conversations with teachers, classroom visits, student surveys, just to make sure that students and teachers have the support they need to engage in the learning that's taking place in their classroom and the materials, the new materials that you, we're using. We'll also continue to We'll also continue to provide professional development throughout the year and really, at the end of the year, really dig deep into some surveys from teachers to make sure that they have the training they need and the materials they need and are meeting the students' needs.
I think, Board members, as we get deeper into this with our, and the learning work you'll see later, this will really have the potential to make a dramatic impact on our results. So it's not only the materials, but it's instructional practice, strategies, methodology, right, that we think with those new tools and with a strong professional development approach, that'll have a significant impact academically on our results. We'll hear a little bit more about the things that are in study this year, another long list coming up. All right, our System-Wide Equity Tools and Training 1.0. I know Duan was going to, he wasn't able to be here with us due to a family situation, so thank you, Brian, for helping.
Sure, I just would preface context that we have a new Director of Educational Equity in the last year. We have a new Assistant Superintendent for Equity Achievement in the last seven and a half months. So when we think about the work of operationalizing equity in our system, there has been a history over 20 years of the district's work leading for equity and students at the center. And so prior to COVID, we were making significant progress in a number of system tools that were supporting leaders across the system and educators across the system and helping them respond to some of the disparities that we have in our system. So as we have engaged in developing a three-year operational plan within the Department of Educational Equity, there was a study of the last 20, 20 years to really understand the tools that have been key in helping us as a system advance. So in that review came sort of reclaiming what our focus is for equity in the system. I just, I want to read that, and then I'll speak very briefly to the two implementation, to the implementation work within system equity tools and training. So the Department of Educational Equity maintains a collaborative commitment to racial equity and educational excellence for each and every scholar in Osceola area schools. We work to remove systemic barriers and create equitable, effective, and innovative learning environments where the race, ethnicity, culture, religion, language, ability, sexual orientation, and gender identity of each scholar is valued and that it contributes to successful educational outcomes. So just wanted to provide that background and context to the items here. So one of the foundational trainings for all new employees that come into our system that we had paused during COVID because it is absolutely an in-person experience, it doesn't translate well to virtual or online, is our EFT Equity Foundation Training 1.0. And so that will be kicking off next week with new staff coming in next week for that kickoff training. The outcomes of this particular training include utilizing our system's tools to establish a common language throughout our system, to increase staff consciousness around the influence of race and culture on learning, and to evaluate their beliefs and convictions about race and culture. And the last one is to be prepared to implement personal commitments that align with the district's mission. So that's one layer of the system equity tools and training. The other is the continued implementation of our equity teams and our equity team seminars. And our equity team seminars serve to support site leaders in helping them have a leadership team at the site level that advances this work in helping their entire building identify and respond to the influence of race and culture on learning. So there'll be four equity team seminars planned for this year, and so that will be happening this year. So I'll pause there. I can keep going, there's a lot of exciting work happening for the implementation. Those are the two pieces that the department will be focusing on in the implementation lane.
Yeah, our goal tonight was kind of high-level summary overview information, but I will, you reminded me that later in the evening, you'll see how we've mapped out when you get monitoring reports and updates on each of the five strategic directions we've mapped them up for the year. So we haven't had that since I've been here. We'll be able to anticipate when you'll get updates as we bring, you know, all the progress that's happening throughout the year. So I'll move on to, I think, Kate, you're going to talk a little bit about, and I can help out too if you need it, the Special Opportunity Review Action Plan Year One, and it's probably a multi-year initiative.
So the Special Education Opportunity Review was presented to you, the findings were presented to you at the end of the last school year. This year, in the Student Services Department Plan Year, you will notice that we are called to create a plan to address concerns identified in the Special Education Opportunity Review and the DMG audit, as you're familiar with. So a stakeholder team will be convened with stakeholders from every site, and this team will address, and it's in conjunction with EMO, so as I know Kelly's sitting behind me, it is in with conjunction with EMO, will address the identified concerns. And those are, teachers do not feel they have open lines of communication between themselves and the district. Teachers desire additional professional development opportunities for special education. Teachers and students would benefit from a more cohesive strategic approach to intervention practices and scheduling. Clarify and modify roles and responsibilities for special education teachers. And DMG, just to clarify what you heard last year, they identified resources, resource teachers for the purposes of the study, what you heard last year, which, and then again, further work would be then for our self-contained teachers. So as you can see, this will be a multi-year process.
And one of the things we're exploring is potentially working with the University of Minnesota and the Center for Applied, Kerry, but Applied Innovation and Educational Improvement, if I kept that right. They've really, they have a little more depth and expertise in the special arena than what we got from DMG. So now that we've identified the key areas, we're exploring the partnering with them to maybe do a second, shorter phase of additional analysis before we launch the work of our action planning team that we're meeting on this tomorrow. So we have some, we want to strengthen what we learned, and then really with the partnership with EMO, have a strong first-year action plan that will involve our teachers in a big part of that work. So I'll have more updates for you as we get closer. I think within the next month, we'll potentially finalize the partnership with the U of M. The Kerry Department's really bolstered their work and have done a lot of additional deep-dive special analysis, so I know Kate and her team are ready to build out the direction. Okay, so I think we've covered MTSS, yes?
Yep.
So now down to Strategic Direction C, promote inclusive participation of our communities and provide timely, relevant, and easily accessible communication. So to start, Kate's going to talk about Year One of our District-wide Communication Plan.
Thank you, Cory. So our district-wide communication plan, every communication plan has four parts, sort of, research, planning, implementation, and evaluation. So last school year, we focused on the research phase of things a bit, so we did a lot of quantitative and qualitative research, that included looking at a lot of surveys, kind of what we were already doing communications-wise. We also did an audit, so really just finding out all we could communications-wise around our district communications. So from there, we developed goals, objectives, and strategies, and then we have a list of tactics, kind of like the House or e-newsletters, et cetera, on how we get information out. So we're going to be starting those tactics and tools this coming school year. Some of them are going to be familiar, and some of them are going to look a little bit new or have a little bit of different spin to them. So that is just coming up, and that's now, so moving from the first research phase to now implementation for the district-wide communication plan. And we'll be talking a little bit more about school kind of pieces of that here coming up.
Likely a multi-year plan as well. We anticipate that to go. Thank you, Kate. Next is our Family and Community Engagement Plan, and we're in Year Two, so another multi-year initiative.
So this one is a bit briefer. The visions for our Family and Community Engagement Program is that we want to ensure that every scholar and family in our community feels seen, heard, and welcomed, that we deepen those connections and strengthen our partnerships with the greater Osceola area schools' community, and that we empower parents as advocates for their scholars. So this year's implementation work will be to identify strategic community partnerships in the Brooklands, Maple Grove, and Osceola, to introduce and apply the Family Engagement Rubric, which you may have, you may recall seeing at one of our other board meetings and board updates, and then to support the RISE Committee and its work. So those are the implementation work initiatives for Family and Community Engagement for this year.
We've got three in a row from you, Brian, so.
How many people are on that team?
Four, and one role is vacant, and we're interviewing to hire for the last role. So it's a four-person team. It's.
Well, we aspire to more, right? We do.
It's a big district.
It's a resource issue, yeah. So you kind of lead, led us to the next one, Brian, the RISE Committee, if you want to give a, it says Phase Two, I think Year Two.
Right.
Same thing?
Yep, yep, sure. So last year's work was to establish the committee and to establish ambassadors for, throughout our community, and they also partnered with several, the committee also partnered with several departments, including communications and also risk management around harm protocol, and that feedback has been very valuable. This upcoming year, we're looking to grow the participation and the representation on the RISE Committee as well as partner to ensure strong representation across other district-level committees. And so that's the work for this year. So I should, that was really brief, but let me say it one more time. So, one, to increase representation and participation from all stakeholders across the community, continue strengthening that, and then, two, to partner increasing representation from diverse members of our community on other district-level committees where we have voices that are missing, so.
And then next is our American Indian Improvement, American Indian Program Improvement Plan. I do think of this one as Year One.
Sure.
We didn't put Year One here, but it is possible this turns into a multi-year effort as well. We'll know more by the end of the year. So Brian, if you want to highlight some of the work there, Board members, you're pretty familiar with the eight areas where identified to our concurrence work, and that's kind of driving this improvement, program improvement.
And our American Indian Education Program, just as a reminder, is designed to affirm the indigenous cultural identities of our scholars who identify, who have identity, indigenous identity. And so we had eight recommendations that came to us at the concurrence vote that was presented by the co-chairs at that time, Arlene and Jessica. And we've been working hard across departments to ensure that we're prioritizing those items. And so what we'll see this year in implementation work, starting this Thursday, we'll be introducing sovereignty lessons, which position tribal nation flags and lessons as sovereignty lessons. And so that will, those will be introduced to the principals this Thursday, and then they'll be communicating with their staff and having through October 31st, Robin, to teach those lessons. And so they'll be, those lessons and materials have already been developed and been shared with our AIPAC chairs. So thank you to that interdepartmental collaboration on that. The second area for implementation work around program improvement is to, is to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Days and Months. So that's the Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's National Native American Heritage Month, and in Minnesota, there is a specific cultural celebration for the month of May, American Indian Heritage Month, that's specific to Minnesota expression. So that is the second area. There are some additional pieces that I think just clarify agreements that we already have in our system around designated spaces that American Indian education staff come into buildings to deliver lessons and programming, that we're clear that those are there and that the partnership is there with each of our sites. And then for making sure that the curriculum throughout students' experiences, not just during Indigenous Peoples' Day or those months of recognition, but that there is visibility for our scholars to see themselves in the curriculum throughout. We are returning with, we're returning to the Vidote Professional Learning Experience for all of our sixth-grade social studies teachers. That will be implemented in the spring this year. All of our sixth-grade teachers will be participating in professional learning experience, and then they will be facilitating those same tours starting in 23, 24 with all sixth-grade students in the system. So that is work happening there. And then the other advancement that we've made is around, there were some concerns about the invisibility of the indigenous student data in our reporting, and so we have worked hard to address the sample size to be more inclusive of our indigenous perspectives and voices. So those are the pieces that we're working, we're working hard on, and there's a couple more, and we'll provide an update later, so.
And we will continue with our required consultation with the MDE's Tribal Nations Education Committee. I think Thomas and Tanya have both been a part of that over a lot of the years. Tynick, yep, that'll continue as well. Moving on to Strategic Direction Letter D, create a system of operational innovation, excellence, accountability, and sustainability. And we'll start with John, giving us a brief update with our emergency preparedness and response.
Thank you. So just as a quick reminder, the staff that normally aren't doing our emergency preparedness and response over the last two and a half years essentially became the COVID response team. So they, at our direction, switched gears and focused all their attention on COVID and less on emergency preparedness and response. So we're moving back to where we would like to be. That's where our initiative for this year is. So the goal is continuing to implement, train, and retrain ways to ensure the safety, well-being of all scholars, staff, and visitors with the goal of ensuring a safe and welcoming school environment and climate. So we had a strategic investment where we added an additional staff member to that group, so we're focusing our attention really on the training and retraining to make sure everyone knows all the tools that are there, available to them, how to use them properly so we can react should a situation arise.
And we had the recent presentation, board meeting, and then we have our community meeting next Tuesday night as well. So, you know, school safety is something we're hyper-focused on, not just our district, all districts, but we're trying to share with our community what our foundational structures are, and that will address some concerns there. The next item is, I'll just take this one, it's in your packet, so I won't spend a lot of time into the department plans. Kate alluded to them, Brian. That's the deeper dive into the work that you're hearing behind some of these initiatives and other work that's in each department, three and DLTL, but that includes HR, goes across the board here. So technology, HR, community education, Brian's area, and community relations as well. And then I'll just mention now off the top of my mind, you'll have the template examples for our site plans that will now align to the department plan. So you'll hear a bit more about them in a minute. Kelly and Steve will touch on that, but those templates are in there so you can see the connections and alignment there. So you'll hear more about those departmental plans as we move through, but you have as background information now on how we're starting here with those plans. So I know it's a lot of information, but I think you need it all to have the full context. Cybersecurity Plan, Phase Two, Anthony.
Yes, just like we talk a lot about the physical security and emergency response within our organization as we continue to move our organization operationally and instructionally into the 21st century, we're deeply digitally connected. And as we've seen coming out of the pandemic, schools have become a hotspot for cyber attacks and cyber criminals. So this is, this is not the second year of moving into cybersecurity, we've been doing this for years, but a larger concerted effort around a comprehensive plan around cybersecurity response and planning, which started with the planning phase and initial training of employees last year. And this year, we're going to continue to expand what that training looks like as well as continuing to review and build out our cybersecurity response plan. So should we have a ransomware attack or a data breach or a phishing, a large-scale phishing scam, how do we respond to that and make sure that we're protecting all of our student, staff, and families' information and systems to make sure that we can continue to operate and function as an organization? In the department plan, you'll see kind of the deeper technical aspects that we're doing within cybersecurity response within Year Two as well. I think I have the next two, so I might just.
Yeah, the only comment I might ever want to move forward is.
That's right.
Our referendum really does, and don't forget that it's about our physical safety. There's items in there around physical safety and cybersecurity from that Technology Capital Projects levy, and then also on the psychological safety side that you've seen the reports from us, that's a key element of our referendum and investing in those staff that provide those services. So I want to tie that all together. So thank you for moving on to the print study action plan. So thank you for moving on to the print study action plan.
So print study, we were in a learning phase last year, trying to understand our printing environment and the strategies that we have around printing as an organization. And we have known and we're kind of confirmed with our print study audit that we have a really disjointed print environment with multiple print solutions providing services to print within our organization and multiple solution providers servicing and supporting our print equipment. So out of that study in the learning phase last year, we identified a comprehensive printing strategy for our organization to manage and support all of the print equipment and the printing needs that our organization does. And so we will be moving into implementing that plan. We're currently in the process of evaluating and looking at all of the print equipment that we have right now to get kind of refreshed and replaced. We have some very old multifunctional machines going on, 10, 12 years old, that are having to call the service provider on a weekly basis that we need to get upgraded and into place. We're also going to be looking at how do we create security and efficiencies within that print environment? So when we think about the cybersecurity lens as well within our print environment, every time we send data to a print job, that data gets captured. So, and we also have print jobs that could release with confidential data on there. So how do we secure when that printing occurs? So we're going to be implementing an environment where employee ID badges actually releases that print job when you walk up to the print station and moving towards a 10-to-1 ratio. So what that means is one printing station for every 10 employees. Currently, we're at about a three-to-four employees for every printing station as an organization. So looking at cost efficiencies and operational efficiencies, as well as the security and the technical environment for efficiencies for all of our employees within that print space.
Quick question. Will that include the Pala V printer option?
Yes, it will.
And the last one has been on the board's mind for many years before I came here with online enrollment. So we are moving into year two of our online enrollment model.
Yes. So I actually, first thing when I came on, heard about this exploration around online enrollment, and we're looking at an online tool with the former organization ties that didn't really come to fruition. So I know in partnership with Brian and really the Enrollment Center, this has been a great project coming into fruition. We started exploration around the online enrollment tool that we have in place now approximately two years ago. Last year was the year one implementation, where we rolled it out for new kindergarten enrollment. So families, instead of having to show up to the Enrollment Center and bring all the paper application stuff, now have an online process to be able to enroll into our system. Moving into year two this year, we're going to be working on any new enrollments coming into the Oseau Area Schools K through 12. So that's where we'll be focused on with our online enrollment tool, which will ultimately move into kind of the large-scale in-district transfer, all those enrollment pieces will be able to operate in that online space without the need of physically showing up at the Enrollment Center. The space will still be there at the Enrollment Center for all the resources and supports that we do provide in that space, which there are a good variety of things there to support families in our enrollment process. But this will be another option to help with families engaging with Oseau Area Schools.
And I want to underscore, what we have at Enrollment Center with multiple services in one location is desirable around the state. We continually have districts coming in to see how we pull that off, because we have kind of a one-size-shot provider model there, which is challenging, but it's highly effective. And they're very busy right now in August. I'll continue to give you online, or enrollment updates. One comment here before we move to our learning work. So there's 16 implementation items, or that is a big number. Like I said earlier, it's ambitious. It'll test our capacity, but we, as a team, felt like these are all things we are definitely committed to and felt needed to stay on the high-priority initiative list. And if you notice that in the spring, and again this past week, once a month, I'll send the board a department update in alignment with the five strategic directions. So you'll get, once a month, a deeper look into what's going on in each department around those five areas. Every other week, you get kind of the higher-level things that are happening week by week. So we're in that rhythm now of giving you a once-a-month update. And I know Kate and Robin and others helped put that together, each department gives a bit of a summary. It's another way for you to have a bit of a progress monitoring on these initiatives as we move through each month until we talk more about this bigger calendar coming. So I'm going to shift us to...
We have letter E.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got cut off. Here we go. Wow, thanks for catching me. Last one, address, acknowledge, and reduce systemic disparities, barriers, and inequities as we lead, develop, and align our district towards continuous improvement. So the two big ones here, well, Brian, let's talk about vision cards we just recently shared with the board, where we're at with that, and a couple of updates here.
Sure. So our progress monitoring tool to see the impact of our high-priority initiatives, we have situated in the calendar that Corey will be sharing later, we'll have five updates, one for each of the strategic directions. And so we'll have a vision card to be showcased in October, December, February, April, and June. And the implementation work for the vision cards, this will be to populate the vision cards with the existing data that we already use and collect in the system. And so that's year one. And then we'll be working on the indicators that we don't have as standard for developing and pulling that data and sharing that as standard work in the system. We'll be building that out this year and implementing that next year, so.
Companion to the monitoring reports. When you get those, we'll have the vision cards connected to each strategic direction. Recruitment and retention strategies, no easy task right now.
So as you know, for the last nine years, this has been a priority work for human resources across the system. And as I'm sure you're well aware, we have a workforce shortage across the nation. So while it's been a priority for us, we know we need to change our practices. So we moved this into implementation because we are relearning and we are adapting our practices to be both virtual as well as in-person strategies for both recruitment and retention. We've done a number of virtual job fairs to try to recruit across the state and across other states. We have done a number of community events that are in-person, working with the FACE Team, community education, transportation, and food and nutrition services, and custodial services. We've partnered together to be out and about in our community to try to attract and retain diverse candidates. We've hired, with your strategic investment, our three new ESP professional development liaisons, and they began July 1. So we are thrilled that they are going to be out in sites. They're working in collaboration right now with our site managers, and they will be at sites beginning in September to work with our ESPs to train, to mentor, and then the goal is to retain those ESPs. And then finally, we are working to enhance our applicant experience as well as our onboarding experience, so that those who are brand-new to our district have a really good experience when they're both applying and when they've been hired for a new job and we get them into our system, in an effort to continue to retain our applicants.
All right, I'm going to move us into the learning work side. So these are the things that we're studying, we're researching, we're developing possible initiatives that might move or likely move to implementation, depending on the outcome of how we study these things and get a little deeper into understanding.
I have a quick question before we do that. And we can hold, if we want to wait till a certain point in time for questions, but relative to the implementation work, given the staff shortages, are there any particular initiatives that we feel are at more risk for us to be able to implement, given those shortages? Or are they all, there's nothing that's more or less at risk than another?
I would, I would suggest that there aren't any more or less that are at risk. We're trying brand-new things in addition to those that we've done before, like partnering with North Hennepin Community College for Orientation Week and trying to get hourly staff through our Grow Your Own program and being in front of other college students in an effort to recruit and retain, so.
Yeah, so maybe like an example, my question is with the multi-tiered systems of support. Are we disproportionately short there?
Here's a good example I'm thinking of, Kate. So we have 16 special ed teacher openings still right now. It's mid-August. And a lot of the ESPs. We have, we're nearly 100 short across the district, not just special ed, but that primarily. So that is forcing us to come up with contingencies in how we do service delivery, how we're going to meet the needs and legal requirements in our IPs. And every district around us is in the same spot. So as we work through our special ed opportunity review, we look at best practice and research, we're always looking at that through the lens of, do we have the capacity, staff capacity, do those best practices? What does that require? When you think of caseloads and other things, I know our buildings are, I think we're all insured today, our buildings are getting very creative of how to utilize different people in reallocating different staff to meet some of the requirements we have. So that's kind of integrity, right? It's a good example. Even, you know, the referendum, if that doesn't go through, we're going to cut more people in addition to the shortages that we have. So that'll create even more challenges with delivering on those initiatives. I think that's a good question to keep asking as we move through the year and as we do monitoring reports.
Right, exactly. Because I think with setting the vision cards and establishing those reports, we may have our targets, but we may want to be realistic about the degree of risk of hitting those targets and reprioritizing and moving quickly to say, no, we're just not going to be able to make the progress we expected here. Should we divert our energy and effort somewhere else?
I mean, I'll add in, I think what you mentioned earlier today, we're in a fairly good place with our certified teaching staff, not including special ed and not including ESPs. And we know we have bus driver issues, we know we have nutrition services, custodians, those kinds of areas are challenging too.
It's not unique from the last few years, actually. So we're not in as dire of a situation as some of our neighboring districts that have 300 teacher openings. We have 52.
That's good context, too. Okay, thank you.
Good questions, and we'll get to a bit more once we get through this last column here. It's a little bit shorter list, not as, not as many items. So Building a Better Future, Phase Two, John will give you an overview of where that's, how that's coming forward.
Sure. So Phase Two is a comprehensive look at facility and building needs throughout the district. So we have had six different groups studying specific areas in conjunction with the ECHMAC group that is providing recommendations based on either over-capacity or under-capacity situations in our buildings. A final report from those study groups will be presented to the board in October. And then, as Corey had mentioned before, the Oversight Task Force will convene, and their job is to prioritize all the recommendations from those groups and figure out the funding sources, which ultimately would lead to a recommendation to the superintendent on a potential bond question that could be held sometime in 2023. With that, we would also want to survey our community to find out what sort of tolerance is there and is there support for that? But that's kind of the process where the study of Build the Federated Future is, and that would ultimately lead to potentially a, an authorization by the school board to either have us move forward or not.
Phase Two is really contingent on us getting through Phase One, because we need the people to be able to do any of the things that might come forward in Phase Two. And Phase Two really is a wide range of things. So that's anything from when we need an elementary school to the growth on the west side, to all the, you know, conversations we had about maybe immersion, programming, things in between, like 21st century learning spaces like we're in right now. So it's a, it's a lot of facility, where do we put programs, what kind of facility needs do our programs need if they're doing it in best practice or style, so.
And it kind of fits with it. I mean, this is a long-term process. So even if we get through the study portion, the implementation process is going to be in the four-to-five-year range, just to roll that, actually.
You get occasionally asked about boundary changes. Those don't happen, it's all those decisions have been made, right? Likely, likely, because we would like to do that in conjunction with facility needs changing. And there's some additions that we got to look at as well. We got some that have over-capacity issues, and we're looking at the under-capacity in other sites, too. All those things will be coming forward in that Phase Two set of recommendations. And then when they come to me, we work through those, and then eventually I decide what do I want to bring to you as a board for consideration, kind of like we did with this edition and how you made decisions about going forward with this one for here at Rice recently. Second one on, and I failed to mention, we're in Strategic Direction A. So we're back to Strategic Direction A. So Brian will update you on LGBTQIA+ history and culture as far as learning work.
Right. So the progress resolution is new, so we haven't had a lot of time to really be with and study thoughtfully the implications and begin our research. So this is very much the definition of learning work in this category. And so this will look like initially identifying some partners. There is a Minnesota-based organization out front that's doing a lot of work to build support and capacity for school districts and organizations, supporting scholars and families throughout the state of Minnesota that we'll be working with. And then it has implications for our Equity Foundations training, how we refine that for next year, as well as our program improvement process for curriculum materials and adoption of those materials. So we're really early in the stage, and there's not a lot to offer concretely at this point, given, you know, the short time that we've had with it. So, but a lot of energy within our Department of Educational Equity to begin digging in and advancing the work.
So board members, as we bring you monitoring reports and updates on this initiative, that's one you'll get along with the others. We think of grouping the initiatives, kind of tying them back to the strategic directions and clustering them together as we bring updates forward to you. Now, something that is a little more tangible is in the next area of Strategic Direction B, some big program improvement studies happening this year. That'll be coming through Kayak. Jackie, be ready. Robin, there's lots to cover here, so.
Right, and we've spoken about some of them during Kayak, but there's more to come. So this year, we're going to be in our third year of learning work around English Language Arts. And so both our elementary and secondary have been engaged in this work for the last three years. We've spent, we've spent a couple of years really learning about the standards, learning about our current reality, looking at best practices around literacy instruction at each of the different levels. And so this year, 74 elementary teachers will be piloting two different resources throughout the year. And if you remember our pilot process, and I think I've explained it before, we have monthly meetings, we look at academic data along with perception data of the teachers and of the students. And then really figuring out how to get really some good data from families, too, about how they're feeling about the materials that their students are engaged with. So that's in elementary. In middle school, actually today and the day before, we've had middle school teachers here really figuring out what they want to do. And they chose to also choose a curriculum resource rather than write their own materials. So they're reviewing different resources that are available for middle school instruction right now. So that's what they're going to be doing this year, and they're trying out some lessons and having some opportunities for the students to engage with the materials and the other teachers and hopefully parents and community members before making a decision. And then in high school, which is actually happening yesterday and today, too, we have high school teachers in really laying out what high school literacy should look like and really digging deep into the standards. So they're at that very initial place of like, which standard lives in what area, what year, and really making sure that they have a plan for that. They've already identified several different resources that they want to continue to look at, and a lot of them have to do with what Brian was talking about. We're really looking at texts by indigenous authors. And so we have a large selection of texts that will either make it in, make it into the actual instructional piece, or they will be student choice pieces that students can choose to use for a specific assignment, or they'll be in classroom libraries. And so that was in collaboration with Ethan Nirdal and the Department of Educational Equity. We are in the very, very beginning stages of looking at secondary social studies and really what we're going to be doing this year is focusing on what's our current reality, what do the new standards look like, and how far off are we, what kind of materials do we need to look at, and what kind of training do teachers need to teach the new standards? Our copyright on our social, secondary social studies is 2010, so a lot of things have changed. And we want to make sure that we are giving our students the most updated information and multiple perspectives and really having them be thinkers about social studies. Health is another piece that we're going to be in the very beginning stages of this year. There, we're both, we'll look at both elementary and secondary and really dig deep. The elementary copyright date is 2003, and the secondary one is around 2010, too. So we'll be looking at what do we need, what's missing compared to the standards, what's actually happening right now in our instruction, and making sure that as we... actually happening right now in our instruction, and making sure that as we move forward, we have a vision for what health instruction should look like in Osseo area schools. And lastly, in secondary, we have high school teachers developing an earth systems course that's going to be taught at ninth grade. And this really is, we've waited for this course because this is the newest piece of information that came from the standards. There are more standards around earth systems than there have been in the past, so making sure that it has a really good transitions to the other areas of science. So they were in today, too, looking at how they want science to look for ninth grade students. So we're going to be continuing to provide professional development, because all of these changes are not as, as we talked about before, Superintendent McIntyre said, they're not about just the materials, they're really about the instructional shifts that need to happen in order for students to engage deeply.
So is this, will that be inclusive of all, like I think about AP/HP classes as well?
And it probably will be a staggered kind of piece, as we're looking at HP/AP classes. Oftentimes, we start with the core required classes and then build out based on that. So it's going to be, for social studies and health, it'll be multiple years in learning work.
And like the implementation, call me of year one, so as these move over, we'll have a year one, two, and beyond. So Board Members, the takeaway is big, lots of curriculum changes, and any one of these in alone, when Robin took the job, I thought, does she really want this?
Too late now.
It's the big ones. It's reading, it's science, it's math, it's health, it's physics, chemistry, all the core area subjects are going through some form of update. Now, the good news is I believe this will positively impact our system and our results. It'll take some time to get there, because you've heard of all the complexities around it, but in a normal year, you might tackle one of these. And so, Connie, your question's a good one, you know, as we work through capacity, we're ambitious with this, and yet I think, I'm confident, well, we're feeling confident about being able to move through, and we're feeling good about the implementation items, and then we're sure learning a lot this year about, how many, 70-plus teachers?
Seventy-four elementary teachers volunteered to be part of the pilot.
Despite everything on their plates, they volunteered to do that.
So we're very excited about that. And the writing teams that have been coming in for secondary this week have been huge, and they've been excited and really just motivated around the work.
And maybe if you read between the lines, we're getting back to instruction, right? We've been really stuck in operational things that we've been forced to deal with, but I think there's a desire and an urgency to get back to really high-quality core instruction that you talked about earlier. Moving on to letter C, Strategic Direction C, Kay will talk a little bit about the study of work we're doing around site communication tools and best practices.
So there are so many ways for our sites to communicate with staff and families, so we're really going to take the year to take a look at what all those different methods are and work collaboratively to determine, you know, what are the, what should you use when and how is the best way to communicate? So making sure that we're all on the same page with what are the best practices that should be utilized. And then we're just going to have translation really be a big part of that as well. And this, at some point, probably you'll see in the next year or two, will lead to school-wide communication plans, similar to how we have district-wide communication plans, so making sure we have that kind of written down on paper as well as what their plan is to reach out to all their different audiences. So really, we're just in the learning stage of finding out what is going on at each of the different sites and being that helpful to assist with what their needs are. We just brought on a new mass notification system called Blackboard, and things are going really smoothly with that. So that is one tool that they can utilize, but trying to simplify that a little bit more and explaining what different features and kind of the benefits to using that at what point, too. So that's kind of the first stage in that.
And Board Members, you've experienced it, the variability we can have across our sites. So really trying to get more consistency and efficiency around how we communicate from the site level, because our families are most connected to their schools, right? That comes first before the district-level communications. The Legislative Action Committee item is one that I've emailed the board kind of periodically on, and we're going to be able to implement that at some point this fall. So putting together, we, there's a number of districts around the metro that already have these in place and we're studying them, and really trying to steal the best pieces of it, right? And we'll, we're also developing an application process similar to what we do with our other committees for community members to be a part of that. So that is coming, and my goal is to make sure that's in place and operating before we get to the point of the board needing to establish our legislative platform.
Yes, and Friday Day.
Thanks, Kelly. So that's coming as well. All right, letter D. Kelly and Steve are going to talk a little bit about the process. You're going to take this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So as Corey mentioned, the plans, the three-year operational plans really demonstrate the move from large department to now the schools. And so that's actually starting up right now. It's not a new practice, the school improvement process is not new, but obviously having the schools develop a three-year operational plan is new. And so that's going to be some different challenges for schools. So the documents that were shared tonight really represent each of the levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And it's been a product of a collaboration between LNA and our TeamWorks team, as well as Kelly and I. So, and also, one of the things to note, as this is happening, what's going on is data digs in our schools. Robin's team has been leading that, where they're looking at their, both the summative and informative data, so that's going to be informing the plans. And so like our previous school improvement plans, in terms of the format, the requirements are going to be around completing, reading, math, student management, and family engagement goals. One of the differences for secondary schools is they also do a graduation goal. And so as far as that, you know, this is where the schools are going to identify where those initiatives or actions fall, so whether it's in learning work, implementation, or certainly in standard. And so they're also going to be identifying within the plans, the five strategic directions. So as you can see, it's going to be aligned to what's happening at the district level, department level, but it's also going to have our teams really push on, really identifying those strategic directives. So we anticipate this is going to be a challenge for our schools. This is different. This is what we want. We want our schools to be thinking about learning work. That's not something that necessarily has been in their wheelhouse, so it's going to explicitly bring out different levels of thinking. So even though it's a challenge, when we introduced the format in the spring, you know, some of the feedback we're getting from the leaders is this is positive. So it's going to allow them and their school teams to really think differently about their work. And similar to previous, our previous process with SIPS, all that will be shared publicly, so it'll be on the websites and everything.
All right, new teacher mentorship supports, Robin.
Yes, and so kind of along the same lines as what Laura was talking about, really working on making sure that our teachers feel, our new teachers feel competent and competent as they're entering the classroom and working with students. So this year, we're going to be learning about best practices and preparing teachers and helping them dig into resources and really do professional development with new teachers. We want to know what they need, and we'll be surveying them and talking to them and reaching out. We also have several staff members embedded in buildings, so we have staff development assessment specialists, and we also have instructional coaches that will all have, along with our new teacher mentor, and the new teacher mentors from student services and our teachers of color, will have like a group of students that they, or a group of teachers, that they connect with often, and so that they become that familiar who-do-you-go-to kind of person. We began this work, actually, this week. We've been meeting with new teachers at all of our Title I sites, and we've had them together. And so we've had 46 new teachers at Zane Wood for the last two days, really digging into curriculum, talking about what the first days of school should look like, the first weeks of school, meeting each other, kind of building those relationships across the different sites, and getting to know who are those people that they can call up and say, hey, you know, can you help with this, or what should this look like? So we're going to be surveying them and really just having those conversations with them through the year to talk about, what do you need? What would be helpful? What is the just-in-time place that we can provide this training for you? We're also be thinking how we're doing new teacher workshop with presenting kind of just what they need at the time. So we started, we shortened the before-school day to really be specific on what do they need to know as they're entering the classroom on the first days. And then we're going to provide training throughout the year on some pieces that can happen, like right before they're doing grades for, or right before conferences, what should conferences look like, right before they start doing their observations with principals, what does that look like? What kind of support do they need? So those are our goals for that, and it's going to be a learning time, that's also.
And as you kind of heard Laura talk about, it's a competitive market to get new teachers. So when we get them, we want to support them and keep them here and retain them and set ourselves above the rest, so they don't start shopping for other places to go, right? Because it's a buyer's market if you're a teacher, you can go work wherever you want right now. Lastly, our Strategic Direction E, Kelly's going to talk about our Instructional Leadership Academy.
Absolutely. So the Instructional Leadership Academy, which is also referred to as ILA, is a program that's offered for, through the Center for Educational Leadership, which is a program at the University of Wisconsin. And it's, or Washington. It must have been Tim in the background. The University of Washington, and it's also in partnership with the University of Minnesota. And we're actually, this coming school year, we're entering our third year of our partnership with this organization. We began our work, if you can believe it, right on, right at the beginning of COVID, so the school year 2020, 21. And at that time, we had four lead principals trained along with the four superintendents. We're all trained at that time. And then, not you specifically, Brian, but in that position. And then last school year, we trained nine lead principals. And then this coming school year, we're going to train all the remaining lead principals. So everybody will be trained in our system at that time.
Fifteen, the remaining 15 will go this year.
Yeah.
Elementary.
And then every lead principal will be trained, including all of our new hires. So during the academy, the principals get to observe and analyze teaching and learning in ways that elevate scholar experiences, particularly for those of our scholars that are furthest from justice, which is something that obviously was a real pull to us for this program. And they also develop practices in collecting qualitative data, giving targeted feedback, and then planning strategic teacher learning that can have an immediate impact. Steve and I, last year and this past year, two years ago in this past year, we got to spend quite a bit of time when our principals were also going through the academy, stopping in and joining them for some of the sessions. And one of their focus really is having that common language around walkthroughs and what are we really looking for in equity-driven instruction? So the goal, the end goal of our partnership and involvement with ILA is to improve instructional leadership and teaching practice in schools and classrooms across our entire system. We believe that with a shared vision, our leaders can ensure that all scholars have a chance to grow emotionally, socially, and definitely academically. So we are very excited about this partnership.
So Board Members, think of it this way, we have a lot of new curriculum coming, then we're doubling down on what can our site leaders do to impact achievement. And the research will say, teacher's number one, the next strongest factor in achievement is the principal.
That's right.
And if they're spending their time in management things and not instruction, we're missing the mark. So this has been about re-centering and actually looking at what's on their plate. You saw the state survey, you know, the things that are on the principal's plates are far away from instruction. So we're trying to flip that dynamic and have the instruction at the center. And then what are the best practices around this? And the next item on here is the Principal Support Academy. That's the training for Kelly, Steve, Brian, and I, and how do we, and Robin, and Kate, and Dwayne.
Yep.
How do we support them? Because if we're not doing our job right, and they're not getting supported, it won't work. So there's the central office component that we're working on, how to be best support and create space for them to be that kind of instructional here at the site level. And I appreciate the cross-departmental collaboration that's happening. So I hope you see we're really trying to target, double down on instruction. When we talk about our results, these are the kinds of actions we need to take to drive better results, we think of better instructional practice with our teachers, better leadership from our principals and our district office, and then better materials, content, all those things that are aligned with the standards. So it needs to be kind of a drew line on all of it. And sorry for a little formatting glitch there at the end, but this is our year's third year, and we'll have all of our principals through that training by the end of this year. And then you'll probably see it as an implementation item, now full implementation, the things we learned through the learning work that we got gone through. It's led by University of Washington, but University of Minnesota and their program is kind of in partnership with Principal Academy, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
I can't remember the exact name of that.
RPSA one? Yeah.
Oh, did I miss one? That's one that got cut off. So system equity tools and training, well, my copy didn't get that. 2.0, sorry, Brian. Takes a T in here.
I didn't need to enter account.
No, it's good. Oh, it's right.
I was just going to ask a quick question. So I'm assuming as we have the new principals come on in the future, they would go through this training, and then is this something that is differential that we're offering as a district, so that it's a competitive benefit versus other districts, or is this kind of the price of admission right now?
Right now, we're in there with five other districts, because it's a cost benefit to share costs across multiple districts. So help me with the groups, Wayzata, Mountain View, 916, Duluth.
And then the intermediate district.
916.
Yep.
So yes and no.
Yes.
This is actually being offered through the National Superintendent Association to all districts. Now, we got in on the early ground level, because now we're, I think some of the groups had to fly to Charlotte this summer to get some of the training that they've been bringing to us here in Minnesota, because we've been able to class share. So we're not a standalone district, we couldn't afford it honestly on our own.
But it's a good indication, because for instance, us expanding now for the rest of our principals, and I believe Wayzata did the same.
Yeah.
So it's obviously taking room.
As we have turnover, if we have turnover, then we'll look out for ways to make sure that that training happens in a few, three years. I know Diane, I'm looking at Diane as a new principal, she'll be part of it this year, some of those new people.
And we eventually have to, part of our work is developing a plan for the assistant principals as well.
Yeah.
So they also will need to be trained.
And then we can get those things as part of this what-we-do standard work.
Yes.
So then as people come in, we've built that capacity internally and not relying on those outside third-party trainers so much as we are right now. So hopefully kind of see the multiple facets of trying to improve results and instruction in our system. So I'm going to pause there and open it up for questions for Board Members.
Oh, wait, Brian.
Sorry. I'm trying to meet the score. Brian, I'm not done against you or something.
I'm looking at the meter, I'm like, I thought we were doing pretty good. So the, as we mentioned earlier, right, new leader, new leadership, new reorgs for the department. And so how do, how do we understand what the system needs developmentally to be supported and where we're at today with advancing equity in our system? So we will be conducting this year a program review of our system tools and the connected professional development. So our clear model will be under construction. This year, we'll be looking at EFT 1.5 and elevating that to 2.0. We've had some policy work and some resolution items that influence the design of EFT, and we want to make sure that this course is supportive of what our existing faculty and staff throughout the system, right? Our work isn't done after we've participated in a workshop, or if you're not a part of the equity team, or if you're not like integrally involved with how equity work is being advanced in places throughout our system. So we'll be working on 2.0 for Equity Foundations training, and then we will also be looking at how we include Policy 508 in our Pride Resolution and in that work as well, so that there's a lot of, a lot of research and study this year to refine and enhance our systems tools to be inclusive of all of the commitments that we have.
And Brian, is it fair to say also informed by our ECAP process that we did not that long ago yet?
Yes.
Fair enough.
Actually, yes, I have that.
I might have missed that.
And it's got the three findings from ECAP, climate and culture, continuous improvement, leadership and governance. I was trying to.
To beat it to it, didn't I?
Thank you.
You'll see how this ties together on the calendar in a minute when we, I'll show you how we're running that through our cabinet, our system leaders, our learning leaders, the board meetings, our site plans, department plans. I have a concept map for you to see when we talk about the board calendar. But before we go there, so you'll kind of see the timing of all this. But before we go there, maybe there's some questions Board Members have about any particular implementation or learning work initiative for this year. implementation or learning work initiative for this year.
I want to make sure that I'm fully understanding one item. So our curriculum items are in, under B in those boxes, but the LGBTQ history and cultures is in a different box. Will, so we have a rigorous curriculum approach and process. Will the elements that are related to curriculum and teaching practices in that resolution go through that same review and process and approach?
I think you could pick a couple of different items that could live in multiple places.
Okay. So it's just, it's in that box for kind of?
Yeah. We can kind of land on that's the best place for it, but there's a number of them. And we actually have NTSS in more than one spot. We were trying to keep it in one place, and it was hard to do. Even the, I think, special work that we're doing, that could be a safe and welcoming environment issue. It can connect to multiple disparate, reduce systemic disparity, especially like going to that one. So there's a number of places they could land. And we're trying to have a bit of a balanced initiative list so we didn't all fall under one strategic direction way too heavily on that particular area. So Brian, you can add to that if you'd like.
That answered it. I just wanted to be sure I understood that. And then did I hear, we said we're going to partner with Outfront Minnesota in that work?
It's a potential partner that has done some work. So.
Okay.
I qualify that to say that there are different perspectives and opinions about many different organizations. So just studying to see what parts are they, have whole systems felt that they have real value and where they may have fallen short on other pieces. But understanding what's a sweet spot of their expertise.
Okay.
That's a qualifier.
That was right.
Okay. Thanks for the clarity.
Jack, can you sit in my back here? I'm sorry.
I just think it's, I mean, to see this kind of laid out and then, of course, I mean, it's just the collaboration is so incredible and I, you know, and I, it's so responsive to what we've been hearing. And it feels good to kind of really see all this come together. And I mean, I think about the Principal Support Academy. I mean, that is, I mean, I remember A M S B, we spent a long time talking about it, the Legislative Action Committee, the curriculum. I mean, that, I mean, it's really big lifts in our district, but it's going to, it's the, these are the, you know, the ingredients that are going to propel us to that next phase district-wide. And I'm just really excited about it. And I just, you guys have put so much work in. And I'm very supportive of it.
And what you'll see is mechanisms in place to monitor our progress. So with that kind of feedback, we can adjust. There may be some new things that come at us we're not even aware are coming, right? Or we go faster or slower than we thought. I mean, given what we can, so we had to have that progress monitoring approach to it. So maybe I'll pause again, like, Tanya or Thomas, Jack, any items you wanted, some additional clarification?
No. For starters, I love the format of this document. A lot of these items, you know, we've talked about over the last year, year and a half. I think the one question I do have is also related to curriculum. I know that that is something that comes up pretty consistently in the community as it relates to curriculum and you always hear about standards. And just wondering how we can better communicate to families that we are doing a lot of work around curriculum, and there's even more to come. So yeah, I think that's kind of a big question for me.
And our, when we come to you with monitoring reports, the plan is to come to a work session and the board meeting because you get a different public facing. It'll be a shorter summary, executive summary and of sorts. Here's where we kind of study things. But through those monitoring reports, that's one way we can communicate to our community about the work happening in all those curricular areas that we identified. And there's more work that's happening, too. We didn't even scratch multilingual learners, some other areas that we are doing a lot in in the department plans, you'll see. And I think the other thing that you made me think about, she was like, when we have parents asking the review process or the input, when we look at new standards and new materials.
Especially for health.
Yep. Health, social studies has been a hot one. You know, that's been a lot of conversation on social studies. Reading can always generates a lot of conversation, too. So I think we've heard that, and we're going to be really intentional about being clear about when those opportunities for input come around through our program improvement process.
I think what Thomas is getting at, not only the input, but the informational piece, the education piece for families, just.
Understanding.
Understanding what, you know, the new curriculum is or, you know, some of those things like schools have curriculum nets, you know. It might be because we're implementing so many new ones that we might want to have a specific curriculum guide to showcase the new curriculum or a community information like we're doing for the crisis management. I'm just throwing that out there as a.
So Vanessa Gill and I have met a couple of times to really talk about what that looks like in elementary specifically. And she has met with Jill Kind about some secondary curriculum pieces also and got some input actually from texts, from the RISE committee and some other community groups. But I think that that's the, that's a challenge and an opportunity for us to, we are at the place where we can invite people in. So I mean, that's one of the things we had talked about after the elementary pilot gets going, having the, having a community kind of open house or a couple nights where the pilot teachers can be there and really kind of talk about the instruction that's happening, too.
I will say from personal experience, our teachers do such a good job. I know in my own kids, they could talk to parents, send me things home to families around, you know, if they're piloting something. And I know a lot of the PTOs do that, too, just like this is what's happening. So I've been a really positive person.
The example that comes to my mind is secondary math. It was a really big change. And so we got a lot of feedback. Families, because they want to know how to support it such a different way, right? And that shined a light for us on, okay, what information do we need help provide to caregivers? Help support. This is different than what many of us even have when it comes to math.
On that note, so I really love the information that we get when we're going through the pilot phase. I don't see as much of that information in the implementation phase. And I know now with the monitoring reports, I feel like we'll get more of that, even reviewing the summary reports, because I have heard quite a bit of feedback yet this year on the secondary math. And it'd be nice to have the data to understand, do we know, is it performing as expected relative to the pilot? Because I don't, and maybe it's just in the detail that the curriculum committee reviews, but doesn't make it into the executive report. So I think the monitoring reports are really going to be exciting to see and continue to hold ourselves accountable to that.
And then we get tighter alignment to vision cards. So those measurable targets, right? That we, that's what we're all hungry for is those metrics. And how do we know what's our dashboard? How are we performing?
Right. And even if it's the more qualitative, but it's still kind of having a clear benchmark of expectations and clarity as to if we're meeting them or not. But it's really great to see this come to fruition on one page as we've been talking about this for multiple years. And so it's really rewarding. And I really appreciate all the effort as well that has gone into getting us here through all of the challenges, persisting through that to get to this point.
Some of our cabinet members would tell you, there's been many years we've maybe had seven, eight initiatives, maybe nine. I think my first year, you were working on reporting back on nine. We have sixteen and then seven new ones. So it's a lot. But it's all work we kind of agreed we are committed to. So the trick is getting that commitment through the system, right? So drilling it through departments to the site plans. These are the tools that'll help us have much tighter, reducing some of that variability that we've all seen across 30 sites. I'm going to hand out this document. I'm going to send them in both directions. There's three pages to it as it comes around. I think, thank Sheri for a free way of holding them. And don't let the busyness of it throw you off. It actually does make sense. So we're going to start kind of wide, and then I'll drill it down to the one-year board calendar. That'll be the next document. And feel free to, yourself. So what this does, so she's taking the board and I should have our cabinets kind of have some time with it. I wanted, this is the superintendent's annual planning calendar. So when we get to your one-year board calendar, that's kind of the board meeting topics, right? But you can see how that, how we get to that point. There's a lot of work that gets us to that point. And our goal is to be, we've been in such a reaction mode for the last three years. This starts to map out over, this is like a year at a glance. And you can see by months and even the weeks, which week, and actually behind this, in my own, I have the actual dates. You can see, so for example, I'll start with the school board. When, you're able to see that small print starts a little bit small, but monitoring reports, implementation updates, your data vision cards, professional development or special meetings, listening sessions, or organizational meetings for the board, your unique meetings versus regular meetings and work sessions. And this plots those out by week, month over month for the year. And I'll just highlight, for example, our strategic directions have letters A through E. So because of, and I want to thank Brian and our cabinet team for taking this through, we had to look at when does data come to us? When do we have it? So we're actually going to go in reverse order by the way we report back to you as the board. We'll actually start with letter E and work our way back to A based on when the data's ready for us, how we can populate our vision cards. So by the time we come to you, we actually have the evidence and data to back up those things. And we map them out every other month throughout the year because that's when the data comes to us. So we can come forward with those monitoring reports and try to time those out with your other meetings you have. So the work sessions, the regular meetings, the special meetings that are popular throughout the calendar. And this allows you to kind of crosswalk how we prepare for that. So for example, on the step above on the cabinet meetings, we are building into our cabinet meetings quarterly operational plan, strategic planning meetings. So before we come to you with updates, we have to process through that as a cabinet. And before we can do that, the cabinet members have to process that with their departments. And how are things going at the sites? So it's staggered in a way where we can, so the week prior to the cabinet getting together and doing that, they're meeting with their departments and getting their progress reports and kind of the accountability steps around that. Also, it maps out, we will be doing once a month strategy meetings on various topics at the cabinet. So for about three years, we've been logistics and operations. And we're flipping, we're actually moving our cabinet days from Mondays to Wednesdays in the afternoon so that we have tighter alignment for the planning for the board meetings and preparation for all of you. So that's a change. And then you can see also, we just put in here when the learning leaders' meetings happen from, so when I have the opportunity to be in front of our roughly, what, 60? Is that learning leaders group about 60?
A little more, yes.
Systems is 160.
Yeah. So we're 70-some.
70, okay. So when we leverage the power of that group in relation to when we bring things forward through our cabinet to the board. So you can see when the, plotted out when our learning leaders, my learning leaders are superintendents, the superintendent, because Kelly and Steve and Brian have D L T L learning leaders meetings monthly, basically every month.
Every month, yeah.
The system leaders is the June and July, or August. We just have the August kickoff, and then we have the June wrap-up. That's for the 160 members of our leadership team. And then we included here the school improvement plan, key pieces of the high-level, important steps in that process throughout the year for the school improvement plans. And we added a community piece here as well because we're talking about planning with case helping others, a state of the district message. So timing that out to kind of capture all this and what's our, I think I've been telling you this, did one recently, right? So, or for example, referendum is plotted there as well. Now, the other thing I missed, too, is like board members, your professional development sessions are also kind of mapped out here. We took your survey results and Christine and I and Brian with some cabinet input are mapping out what you want to see occur during the course of the year as we pull cabinet into your PD sessions that we talked about. The back two pages are just breaking the year and a half. So you can see a little more detail, like the first page is the first two quarters, and the second page is quarter three and four. So the first page is a full out of glance, and then it just makes it a little larger. This was our first draft, literally just came out of the press today. So it's still a work in progress. But the concept is how we're taking these district initiatives, drilling them through departments to the sites, and how we're leveraging our leadership teams to be centered on all the same strategic investment, continuous improvement items, right? As we circle back to you, board members, throughout the year on implementation updates. And so we will, the initiatives will be bundled, right, by those strategic corrections that you've set. And then as we do this, we'll learn from it, we'll get your feedback, and we'll make changes, right? But we haven't had a plan for, since I've been here, an intentional plan for the year around when things will come to you and how are they aligned to the strategic plan. We've been reacting month by month, probably out of necessity because everybody has the best we could do. But as you see, these initiatives, these are plentiful, intentional ones, and we have a timeline set around them. That's the intent of this. And then to drill it down a step further, this is the first draft of the one-year board calendar. If you remember last year, as we started the year, it was a little thin because we started with the things we know have to happen, like the budget has to come at certain times of the year for your approval, and the updates that come around the budget. That's a good handle example. Or your levy votes, those have to happen at certain times. So what we've done here, and I'll just give one example of how we map this out on the board calendar. If you look at, I'd like to get the other way around first. And again, that's, the intent is also come every work session. And we're going to do a better job of actually dedicating time to reviewing it because we're not always successful at these work. I'll just do a little highlighting of a couple of things each month. This, as we start the year, there's something we know need to come throughout the year. So on page two, it's July to December part of the year. For example, in August, we'll have our resolutions calling the special election. We'll look at the updates from John that got from M D E to help us with the final numbers on the referendum. In September, we'll have our brush fire survey results. So we'll do that, remember that second survey to learn what's changed since Lynn Morris-Lovett did that in January. Now, the economy's changed. Has, what's the tolerance level of our communities? Has that changed as we are in the final stretch for the referendum vote? I just have another one. We'll have our new student board reps. So we'll have interaction with them in September as well. The preliminary levy, things like this that are seasonal and timing is, they're kind of a set thing on the calendar. Then when we get to October, you'll have your first monitoring report. So we could start with the initiatives tied to strategic direction E for study at work session. And then a shorter executive summary at the board meeting so that we're communicating up and out to our public. So the down and in at the work session so we understand internally, and then we go up and out to the public. And direction E comes first in October. Strategic direction D comes in December. It's about every other month, so you can see the pattern. So then strategic direction C, if you look on the next page, is in February. April is strategic direction B in April, and then June is strategic direction A. And that is again, ginging on when we get our data. So certain data is collected at certain times of the year. That drives, when will we have information for you on our progress and success around each of the strategic corrections? There are some other things that are in here. So a lot of these won't look too unfamiliar, but we've already mapped out the building a better future phase two. And if, you know, depending the results of our phase one, we'll make adjustments to it. If we have to make adjustments. But right now, we're at least planning out where we'd ideally like things to land. And then as we move through the year, you know, different things will be added. If you remember last year, we made tweaks to this regularly. That's why we review it at every work session. Some things got moved to different months or taken off or added. And our cabinet reviews this. We try to do it every week, especially leading up to board meetings or work sessions so that we're as up to date as we can. Another example, I'm thinking of Laurel, we talked this morning. We have placeholders for negotiation strategies and for contract ratifications. It may not always happen every month we pull those off if they're not ready, but we have placeholders there for when they are ready as we enter in the new round of negotiations. And we'll already have some information this month coming forward with progress on that. Then like even the public engagement pieces, we've mapped, we included the community informational meetings on safety and risk management. And as we move through the year. And as we move through the year, if we do additional ones, we'll begin to plug those into this, this board calendar. So there's some staples that are just part of, we know when they come in the, like the financial audit, we know that comes, when it comes. The bulk of these initiatives that we went through tonight will show up in those five. You'll know what time of year they come, because that's when we have the most information ready to go. We wouldn't be ready for that, strategic direction A in September or October, we don't have that yet, because we just launched it here. We'll have more information by the end of the year. So hopefully you see a connection with the directions for this year, the department plans that were in your packet, the templates for the site plans, some intentionality between planning the year leading to the board meetings. So the work that comes through the administrative boards from the sites to the departments to the cabinet, our system and learning leaders, and then the planning that comes in preparation for the board meetings, the special monitoring reports. Actually, I know board members, you were desiring some different formatting to how we do the presentations at the meetings, a little more concise model, and we're exploring different alternatives to. So it's not so much reading the slides, it's more of, we've given you the information, we're going to get the highlights of some of those things, and maybe a little more of the data that's going to come as part of the monitoring reports. So the cabinet has a little more work to do on that, but that's something we know that you desire as well. Applause there. Questions, comments, thoughts? This is kind of where we're at today. And then we'll, each month, you don't, I need that placeholder to review this, but occasionally I might update this for you as well, so that you have a central list that's coming through the system to you. Okay. So I'll, Sherri, how's someone else going to help me gauge feedback or?
Let's take a five minute break. Everything's going to be fine. Let's take a five minute break. We're almost done, so I think it's just the last, we just want to ask if there's any questions? Anybody have any question? Robyn?
One of my questions was, I kind of appreciate the monitoring report timeline with certain data sets coming in, but can we do pulse checks? Or is there something to know, are we on track or off track? Because especially when we think about direction A, it, this kind of feels like, yeah, we'll have new monitoring reports, but are we really going to know something different if it's sort of, we finally talked about it at the end of the year and it's like, oh, didn't go so well? How can we kind of have the pulse checks or the key indicators earlier?
So one of the things we talked about was in those monthly department reports?
Yeah.
Because they're tied back to the strategic directions. So that's one way we can give you kind of updates on the work moving forward. Also, I'll say through our, I need with each board member one on one, we can review some updates in that regard. I don't know if your desire is to have them on multiple board meetings or not?
No, I'm just wondering, how do we see ahead of time? Are we directionally on track or off track? So we can take course corrections before we get to that point in time, especially the ones that are later in the year, that are really important.
Yeah.
Like, that's the intention.
The mechanism for that, for me, because this is our internal plan, is the quarterly, we are looking at all of these quarterly and then once a month at the strategic meeting, what I call the strategic planning meeting. So we're setting aside a cabinet meeting every month, just to check how we're doing and then quarterly going deep on all of them. So that's probably an opportunity for me to connect that with board members, like, hey, we're on or we're off track?
Yeah.
You know, what are the, what are the external influences? Was that what it said on the, on our visual? There's, there's factors, you know, influences that might impact our, our progress.
Yeah.
Could or bad, right?
Yeah. And that's really what I'm getting at, is are we on track or off track?
So we, that's kind of drilling down through the department plans. That's, the intent of this is to have some alignment that feeds up through the system. I'll think more about how we could feed more of that to you, especially for these later ones in the year.
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be super data intensive, so we can talk more.
But my first reaction was those monthly department updates that are tied back to the strategic directions, because our team looks at that through the initiatives, high priority initiatives, and then the department initiatives as well.
Yeah. My other kind of key priority item is thinking about the school culture, environment, safety, and having kind of early indicators. Are we in an improved situation at the start of this school year in the first couple of months relative to where we were last year, so that we have an understanding earlier?
Anyone can jump in. Sorry to forecast what we're going to see starting out here.
Right.
Your question is, when will we have a, a report on how, how it's going?
Yeah, like incidents reported through the first couple of months relative to last year, are we better, worse, things like that, that we, that we have the data for.
Yeah.
See if we're on track.
You know, the, you heard our principals at our June meeting, I think, talk about, you know, this is really a reset for a lot of things. And getting centered on a lot of these is going to position us to, we believe, to be a lot more ahead of the curve on that.
And Corey, I feel like my department report that would pick up risk and that emergency preparedness should be able to touch base on something like that on a monthly basis. So can I have an idea?
And we typically, at our learner leader monthly meetings, we typically have the position for district level principal, Amy, they report out on that at least by mid-year. So we end the year, we'll start the year next week when we meet, she'll go over where they ended with some of their student management data. Then we review it again mid-year and then they'll end the year reviewing it. So we look at it three times a year in those meetings.
So those will be built in opportunities to share that with you.
Yeah. And so Amy can share any of that data.
You kind of say what you said earlier, there's the quantitative and then there's the qualitative, because we hear, we hear the perception.
Yes.
And it doesn't always match the data, but it's so, perception's reality sometimes. So.
The first part of your question around, are we positioned better to?
So we talked about the reset. So knowing that last year was a really difficult year in terms of behavior, how will we know that we are in a different position this year than last year? And how soon will we know that? Like, when will we see like, yes, we're like, it's better or, oh, no, we're not seeing?
By mid-year.
I would even, you know, even like, by mid-try, like we, like our enrollment, we always think by end of October, enrollment settles in, for example.
By the 15th.
November 1st. November 1st is the date we use.
Yeah. And we feel like it's settled in the schools by October 15th.
Yeah. I think, I think that there, there's a, there's a, there's a recognition by leaders, as we've heard them talk with us at various times, not only at the June session and the conversation that Corey's been having, as well as just our conversations as we've been working with them over the summer. There's, there's an intentionality around how we get to start this year and building community and cultivating the community and really doubling down on how we teach our rituals and routines, how we teach our PBIS positive behaviors, that, that was like restricted and limited and like we were mitigating, 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 mitigating the COVID measures all the time. So they're, they're excited to be in that space. And so I imagine that our early data will probably be really good.
That was interesting today, and our August board meeting last year and how challenging that was. That was a hard start to the year. We had a, you know, big interruption in January, just a lot of influences that we, there was a question about enrollment and our enrollment fluctuations last year, well, that was being driven by where you fell on the COVID mitigation spectrum. Some families wanted to be with us because of masks and some wanted to not be with us because of masks, right? Those are the things that were really wild card variables that just really were swinging so wildly. This year, some of those things aren't part of our narrative, it's part of our reality. It's actually the same way. And back to some of the instruction that we were limping through, probably for about three years.
It'll be interesting to see what we addressed earlier around how well our buildings are staffed, how strong our sets are.
The other part that's harder to predict, like, you know, we've had a lot of challenges in the community too, in different communities with this violence and behavior in the community. And so we've been really trying to work even closer with our city leadership. We're going to continue our monthly meetings with, it actually includes our community college partners. There's a new interim president that had been decked. And Paul Rolando joining us and then continue those conversations so that, because we had some really big behavior things last year, like serious incidents that we, you know, every school district was experiencing.
Right.
I feel like we'll be better.
I think we have to give it a chance.
Yes.
You know what I mean? Like I, I can report back, I've won in every, um, elementary, starting middle and high school, and I think you just have to like, there's been a lot of communication already to families, or I've received a lot, I have, you know, they, they tell you like what does it kind of have your kids, you know, what the expectation should be. So I, you know, I, I'm looking at this, I'm looking at our strategic directions and, you know, I think as a board, we've really laid that foundation for the strategic directions. And these are, you know, excellent initiatives, tangible initiatives. But I also think we have to have a little grace with just getting it going, because with the hard reset, I mean, that, that is a huge piece of it.
And our stakeholder surveys tell us a lot too. So our family, staff, and scholar surveys, you know, will we see a difference this coming year versus this past, past three years? Basically, that's true.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's the point that we have the intentionality, we have the time, we have the ability to do it this year is, is an actual difference versus last year that can be articulated. So that's the type of information that's really helpful to be able to say, yes, it is going to be different this year because we did this, rather than we've got a bunch of plans and we'll watch and we trust that it's okay. So I think that data point is really helpful to be able to articulate.
There were points in there where you're just making sure enough people to keep the doors open.
Yeah.
I mean, I just want to be careful, we were not, I mean, it wasn't all negative this last year, okay? So that's, I think we have to be really careful of that, like.
We had a lot of creative things come out.
Yeah. I mean, there was a lot of improvements and things like that, but it was, we're on, we're in a good foundation. Maybe I'll have any questions?
I'm back to Jackie. I know Jackie.
No, I just, I don't have a lot of questions because these are very thorough and I just super appreciate that they were very thorough and easy to digest. I feel like for a long time, they were like trying to like walk through, we're in Minnesota, right? We've got a bunch of lakes, like you're walking through the muck to get into the water and it's just a little harder to walk through the muck, so you can get there and swim. And I feel like we're swimming now, like we can now just take off. It was hard to see how all this was going to come together and this page just beautifully puts all of the pieces together with the remembering that all of this came out of community engagement. And it's hard to remember that because it took so long to get here. This was through all those community engagement groupings that we did to get to this place. So I'm very excited to get the, the data and the qualitative data and see how this, you know, starts playing out and how we shift and pivot.
As you each read the department plans too, I encourage you to reach out to the cabinet member that oversees that.
Yeah.
Because there is a lot there, a lot to ask you to digest during the week, let alone tonight. So I would encourage you to read them and follow up with any questions. You'll have a lot more questions as you unpack all this. But if you walk away from it, there's, this, hopefully our intent is the alignment, district, department, the site, and then the mechanisms to, the whole accountability towards all that, right? That's our next needs.
I want suggestion on this, and I'm guilty of this as an educator, there's still a lot of acronyms that if you're not an educator, you might not understand. So just, you know, just a reminder of when, like I saw WIDA in here several times and I think if you're not, you know, if you don't know that background, you know, just.
I know, I know we, we process through that as a cabinet team as well.
Yeah. WIDA is, I don't know what it stands for, but it's the main, oh, sorry. I was going to ask what it says.
Testing for EL.
It's the main organization that oversees the EL, the standards.
Yep.
And so they, they're the ones that have the access testing and all that, which the access testing is to see which level your English learner is at. So are they proficient, are they?
Yep.
I was going to add with the acronyms, we, we talked a lot about that as cabinet as well, but, you know, as we think about this with department plans, these are really the internal operational plans, they're not designed for public consumption.
Right.
Where we would have changed language should it be publicly posted.
I fully understand that.
Yeah. But that's a good point. And even some of our staff would struggle, actually, Mark Wida.
I was just thinking that. Yep. She mentioned that today, all the acronyms.
So even our, even our own staff can get stumped with some of the things that are acronym-heavy.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much for kind of trying to digest this, and this is just the beginning.
This is great. All right. This work session is adjourned at 8:16. Yeah, early.